Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Lemoore.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Excused.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. I'd ask we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of the city and all who visit.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
I don't believe there's any items for the amendment for the agenda from the administration. I see also our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Salz, with us this evening. Thank you. Seeing if there's no others. Councilwoman Moore?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd just like to pull items.
That'll be under the consent.
I'd like to approve the agenda as written, please.
Thank you. The motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And for Item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $714,308.07. 714-308.07.
Thank you. Next item, please. Oh, wait, consent agenda, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, items on the consent agenda, we had a discussion at our work session regarding the consent agenda, so there are some items that we have addressed. I don't know if we want to start with those by any council member.
Number 3698, 3705, and 3709 polled for further discussion.
So, there's items 3698, 3705, and 3709 polled for further discussion. Any other items on the consent agenda council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items from those present? Seeing on the motion would be ordered. Councilman Felder?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that all items not on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Moore, that all items not pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, or recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is presentations, communications, and public hearings. The first item is 3711 Draft Opportunity Center at ALCC budget for fiscal year '22 through '23.
Mr. Salz.
Your Honor, this is just for communication purposes. The MCOP board is to act on the budget next week, I believe, and based on that, there could be further action in the future, but for tonight, it's just for information.
Okay. I see that Stephanie Caspersak is here from the MCOP. I don't know if you have any comments or thoughts? If not, we can move forward.
I don't, except to say that our board meet since September, as alluded to, and will approve the budget, so we'll come back in October when it's quarterly report time, and not only will we quarterly report on full budget.
Very good. So, at this point, it's a... It's a communication, is that correct? Okay. All right. Anything further? Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is Item 3713 Public Communication, and in accordance with our current policy, letters received by the clerk treasurer for the record are placed in your... on the agenda and in the packet for your information. So, this is simply just communication to you, and of course, the general public has access to all of these letters, either through the online agenda or by contacting the clerk's office.
Thank you, and I know that we've had some communication regarding this that have come in. I received, I think, copies of them. I don't know if Mr. Bud's do, but we reviewed that and made sure that they are placed on the agenda here as communication, and that those that have sent in letters are received and on file.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
So, the next item is council action. Item 3708 Approval of Professional Services Proposal: Architectural Design of Opportunity Center Library.
Mr. Salz.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Patrick Lewis to present this item for us.
Very good.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. As Mr. Salz pointed out, this fact sheet did come from Mr. Cochran, who is out of town today, so he's asked me to step in and just sort of give you a brief synopsis of what we're doing on this item. I think you're all familiar by now with the project and what we're talking about doing here, so I'll skip that part of it, just kind of give you an overview of what we're looking at doing here. As has been said before, we're still stuck in a little bit of limbo here. We did get the $7.8 million earmarked funds from the state of Michigan, but we're still waiting to hear which agency is going to administer those, what our... who our contact person is there. So, we're a little bit nervous that that process may take a few months here to get sorted out, and so the concern is the possibility of missing the window for maybe getting footers in the ground and starting construction in late 2023. So, there's sort of a calculated risk going on here to assigning some city funds to this project because we're concerned that by waiting an additional year on this, we may be in a situation where the construction escalation will far outpace the allocation of city funds to this project on the front end. So, that's why administration solicited a proposal from Kohler Architecture for schematic design to get us to the point where we know the full scope of the project, and we can begin moving forward with the detailed design. There are three proposals on your agenda tonight, one of the main one of which, of course, is Kohler Architects, and that was for the bulk of the design. That is in the amount of $66,000. We did also solicit to from AUC Construction, and you may remember AUC as the construction manager on the fire station project, did an excellent job on our behalf, and we found with that project, it was very advantageous to bring them on board right at the beginning because they can identify, do various cost analyses, give us... I'll say the constructibility side of things, and potentially even start to do some value engineering before we've even started to lay the building out. So, we think that would be very advantageous. They've indicated a willingness and excitement to work with Kohler Architects, and Kohler has expressed the same with them. So, AUC's proposal will be $19,255 is what we're asking for on that. And the third proposal here, which is again sort of an efficiency thing here, we asked the civil engineering firm Anderson, Exgene, and Westrick, AEW, to perform TOFRA graphic survey for the remainder of the site, and the primary reason we went with them was both our satisfaction with their past work, but also that they were the surveyor and the civil engineer of record for the Labor Park project. So, we've already got a lot of the base drawings in their CAD files, and so it was a very natural fit there. Their contract does not require council action in and of itself because it's under $15,000, it's $5,600. However, because we've had to appropriate funds for the project at large, we've put all three of these on the agenda together. So, we'd be asking tonight for the approval of those three contracts, which total $90,855, but then ask for the encumbrance to be raised to about $95,000 in case we have little things here and there that are slightly outside of scope or reimbursable expenses. So, I think I'll leave it at that and see if there's any questions.
First, I'll see if there's any questions for Mr. Lewis from the council. Mr. Salz, anything further?
No, nothing further. That's a good explanation.
All right.
Sir Lewis said, I just briefly here, you know, we've moved forward with this project over the months. We've, as council, have embraced and supported this and understand the benefits of the community, and also we understand that the cost analysis done on this. But also, as these projects are moving forward, this, you know, with the state funding, we're not sure at this point which state department is going to be managing it that we will work with as this comes through. But getting this started with this work being done and being ahead of this, when the October 1st budget for the state comes in and is designed, then we are getting further into the timeline to make sure that we can procure the contracts and start development. So, it's really a time item of importance, as I just wanted to share. There's no other questions? Councilwoman Lemoore?
No question, just a motion, Your Honor.
Please do.
To approve an agreement with Kohler Architecture, AEW, and AUC for architectural, engineering, and construction consulting services for the schematic design of the expansion or renovation of the Opportunity Center at ALCC and Navar Library in an amount not to exceed $90,855. That $95,000 be encumbered for this phase of the project, that the Economic and Community Development Director be authorized to execute the necessary agreements on behalf of the city, and that the Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, be authorized to make any necessary fund transfers and/or budget amendments.
Two. Okay, there's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on Item 3708, the Approval of Professional Services Proposal: Architectural Design of Opportunity Center and Library. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
So, the next item is from the consent agenda, and it's Item 3698 Appointments to the Tree Advisory Commission.
So, I asked to have this pulled because as we went through, it's always great to give recognition for those that are willing to serve, but for council's consideration. But going through the resolution, while the fact sheet and the listing does list it as a Tree Advisory Commission, I noticed that in the resolution, it says Tree Advisory Committee. So, I know I chatted with Mr. Bud's, and I asked to have it pulled, but I think we're making appointments to committees that could be ad hoc or short term. A commission is different because we're definitely coming within our ordinance. So, my only request to have this pulled was because it should say, therefore be resolved as it goes through, that it's a Tree Advisory Commission, that committee. Mr. Bud's, anything further?
No, Your Honor. I think if there was a motion to approve the resolution with that amendment, that could be made by the clerk's office and then moved forward.
Okay, it's on the floor for discussion. Is there any questions about the recommendations for appointment and otherwise a motion? Councilwoman Lemoore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution making appointments to the Tree Advisory Committee.
With the committee or... Needs to be... Maybe I misunderstood. Did you say commission?
Committee.
Commission.
Commission.
So, on the resolution page, the last paragraph says, therefore be resolved that the following people be hereby appointed to the Tree Advisory Committee. And when we pass this and ask to have it commissioned established, it says commission... Or, sorry, it says committee on the resolution. Resolution asks a state commission. So, we're approving it here this evening, and we need, if you're in favor, to amend it to commission versus committee. Yes? Okay. There's a motion? And as support by Councilwoman Germaine. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your Honor, before we move on from this item, I think that there are members who have just now been appointed who might want to speak germane to this item.
Sure.
And we should give them the opportunity to do that.
You're going to come and introduce yourself. Andrew?
Hello, Andrew Duhemel, resident, Sixth Precinct. This will be my first kind of, I guess, official sort of involvement in the city. I'm not a long-term resident, just been here for five years, but very excited to get involved, to kind of, you know, see how the sausage is made, as they say, and, you know, do what I can to ensure that, you know, my kids grow up in a fantastic city whose best days are still ahead. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks for being here. So, I'm going to go through the list of the other names, because it's just for... I usually do it at the end, but since we're having a commentary, I'll make it right now. Of course, Andrew has introduced himself. Robert Peaven is also on the list. Melissa Levesque, Lisa Anberg, and Deborah Fortune. So, I want to thank everybody for their willingness to serve, and I thank the council for their support of the recommendations for the appointments. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is another item that's moved over from the consent agenda. It's Item 3709 Approval of Demolition Contracts for 1304 East First Street and 1026 East Second Street.
Mr. Bud's, I think, review and then sort of council's consideration, please.
Your Honor, the matter, the reason why I asked that this be pulled is that I had a discussion with representatives from the property owner and a proposed property manager for the property at 1304 East First. For those that... For placing it, it's the church that's located on First Street. I'll say between the railroad tracks and where the curve happens near Detroit Stoker. The property has been, at least as far as the city knows, vacant for quite some period of time, and the matter went through a process with the Construction Board of Appeals. Just to give a brief timeline for council, and then I'll be happy to take any questions, or if the mayor would be so inclined to have anyone present speak to this matter. But in short, on August 20th of 2021, the building official, then at the time Bill Greenhall, issued a notice and order for demolition, and at the time, a hearing was scheduled for September 23rd before the Construction Board of Appeals, which would allow the property owner to make any comments or object to the proposed demolition of the property. On September 23rd, that hearing was held, and I believe Pastor Freeman was present at that hearing. There was discussion about additional inspections and information. There was a proposed purchaser for the property that was present, and there was an indication that additional documentation will be provided regarding a proposed rehabilitation of that project. Approximately two months later, in November, none of that information had been received that was requested by the Construction Board and the Building Department, and so at that November 18th meeting, the Construction Board of Appeals decided to uphold the building official's determination that demolition was appropriate, and that notice was provided to the property owner by my office, both by email and certified mail on December 2nd, was delivered and indicated through postal records, delivered to Pastor Freeman on December 9th of 2021, with there being, I'll say, some sporadic communication, including phone calls in February and March with both Pastor Freeman and Realtor Ray Lemons regarding a potential rehabilitation of the property and an indication that it would involve some sort of action to overturn the Construction Board's decision. Those occurred in February and March. In May, there having been no additional activity by the property owner to either rehabilitate or to demolish the structure, a pre-demolition search warrant was obtained from the District Court in May, and pre-demolition inspections and activities began in advance of tonight's city council meeting. There was a request for bids for demolition of the property, and in light of that item, I informed the property owner that the item would be on the agenda for tonight for approval, potentially of a bid for demolition of the structure, and that's when I received contact from both Pastor Freeman and a proposed property manager, who I believe is present this evening, to say a few words about the property, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there anybody present here this evening that would like to speak regarding Item 3709? Yes, please do. Come forward and name and address of jurisdiction of residency, like city.
My name is Jamie Abalos. I live in the township of Monroe, not the city.
That's okay.
I grew up in the city.
Just for the record, so when the clerk has it and others look back, they know who and where. That's all. Thanks, Jamie.
I have been involved in the process of this for a month now as property manager because they're all out of state. So, they contacted me about handling this. Yes, Pastor Freeman was here in September. She states to me, and also I believe to Matt, that they did not receive anything after the September hearing, but that's just knowledge that I have from them. I stopped in a month ago, and we excelled. I have a letter here I would like to read, if that's okay. This is from the family. We have inspected the property at 1304 East First Street, Monroe, Michigan 48161, and have determined that it is structurally sound and will require some repairs that are willing to do... We are willing to do the roof and internal walls of the building to restore it back to a habitable state. We have begun the process and are working with Jamie Lynn Pridemore Abalos as a property manager. We have already had the trees and foliage and on the building taken care of, and the garage has been demolished. We will continue to finish cleaning the rest of the foliage on the property in the next two days. We are in the process of getting quotes from contractors and electricians. Based on information from the contractors, we are dealing with the foundation is intact. We need to finish a small part of the roof and repair some siding and spruce it up outside and the deck. The inside will be rewired and the walls refaced. It is our request that the building be removed from demolition lists and permits be issued upon requests for repairs as we intend to restore it back to two units with a common space in the restored area where the church was originally held. Our family and church have been longtime contributors to the wealth and prosperity of the city for many years. We are looking forward to working with the city and creating a great example of what it takes to restore and bring back the value of the east side of Monroe. Thank you, and sincerely, Elizabeth Jackson Freeman. I have some pictures, if... I don't know if you guys want them, of what it looks like now since we took the... All of the overgrownness off of the building. That's all gone. One tree remains right up next to the building, but I have to contact DTE because the... It's... All the electrical lines are going through it. But it doesn't look bad, it's just still too close to the building. It's a very small tree, but it has electrical lines going through it, so we didn't want to do that. I don't believe we're supposed to with that. We have contractors that are doing the job of the inside. We are working with James Hayes, Michigan Home Improvement Specialist, 3D Home Improvements, and then Bren's Electrical, Inc. is doing the electrical work. The long-term plans of it is to give back to the community with low-income housing and ministry.
Photos to be part of the record, you can provide those to the clerk, and then they'll be included in the file.
Okay.
Mr. Bud's, I just... I guess I'll see if there's any comments or questions from council as well, but first, I mean, the timeline wise goes back a while. I was looking for not what is going to be done, but what has been done regarding the condition of the building, as well as not having contractors, but contractual work done. Mr. Bud's?
That's why I brought pictures, because it shows what we have done outside, and the outside of the building looks great, besides a couple pieces of vinyl that need to be replaced from when the outside electrical frist. But other than that, the outside of the home looks beautiful.
I understand that, but it's, you know, looking at the demolition and the fact sheet here, it's about deemed dangerous buildings. It's not dangerous because of the outside. It's dangerous while that's not appealing, and that may be cleaned up. It's the concern is the inspection that was done back on... I don't have the exact date of what looked... When the building official went in and being habitable, and it's not, and it's still not today, it doesn't appear to be, or at least sound to be, I should say. Mr. Bud's?
Your Honor, I would say I also spoke with our current building official, Lauren Benes, today. I don't believe there's been any permits pulled of any kind for any work that would have been done if there's been work that's been done, so that's obviously a concern depending on what type of work was or wasn't done and what did or didn't require any permits. But I will say, I know that one of the major concerns was the source of the fire was an electrical problem previously, and the building official indicated that there were some major concerns about the electrical system, and so that would certainly be one major concern. I want to also say, and I have these that I can give the clerk to put in the record also, that there was, like I said, certified mail of the letter to Pastor Freeman that was sent out December 2nd, was received December 9th of 2021. In that communication, with the record and order of decision from the Construction Board of Appeals, it does clearly state that property owners or representatives have the right to appeal the decision by seeking judicial review within 21 days, and I will say, I also personally had conversation with Pastor Freeman within that period of time in December, in which she said she had gotten the communication and wanted to talk about ways to rehabilitate, and I will say, it's always been my consistent position that if they disagreed with the Construction Board's decision, there's not a lot I have any discretion to do, that they have the right to seek an appeal from the Circuit Court, which was not. have the right to seek an appeal from the Circuit Court, which was not done in this case. I also have pictures that were attached when we obtained the search warrant and that were provided to the Construction Board of Appeals at the time of the hearing also.
Okay. Questions from counsel? So I guess, what was the start date on this process?
Your Honor, I will say the start of this particular process was August twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one. Now, I will say, that was a reissuance of a notice and order for demolition that goes back as far as two thousand and sixteen, which I believe is after the time of the fire. And so it has been a long process, but this particular iteration of it began August twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one, with the building official's notice and order stating that demolition needed to occur and showing that the scheduling of the hearing that would be held before the Construction Board on September twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you.
The fire that was in two thousand and sixteen was when the garage burnt down. That wasn't the electrical fire on the house. So I know stuff did change somewhere in the process of that.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I don't have the date in front of me, Your Honor, with the time that the fire and the structure occurred, but I do believe that that was pre-two thousand and sixteen, which would make this an even longer process that that's existed in its condition.
So my question isn't for the exact, isn't for the exact date, it's the timeframe in which this has all started, and here we are now, and we still don't have permits pulled. One of the items that here concerns me is when the opportunity presented itself for the owners, following the ruling by the, I won't say by the city, but by the, through the process of demolition order, you know, there's appeal processes, which is to go to Circuit Court for appeal, and it wasn't filed. So if they're not willing to file it at that point, but now come and say they're going to do and have contractors that are going to do work, it's not any closer than it was years ago.
If there's appeals that need to be filed, we can handle that. They did not tell me I needed to file any appeals, but this work will be done before December first, all of it. We have way less than the amount that you have on there for the contractor and quotes for jobs to be done, to redo a dwelling that's been there since the nineteen thirties, instead of tearing another house down on the east side of Monroe.
That's not what the discussion is about today. It's about following a process to make it habitable, and looking at all these dates and opportunities to do that, or opportunities to file, or if you didn't, weren't successful in the decision made, Construction Board of Appeals, it's, there's, there was a process known then, but it wasn't done. And so here we are still now here today, saying it's going to be done. And at some point, while we, I don't think anybody up here is about wanting to demolition every building, no matter where it is within the city, but at some point, it becomes a timeframe for the community and the residents to have to continue to live next to a building that has deficiencies.
And I agree with you completely.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So how much longer should it be? That's the question, because it's always going to be, and we've been down this road, not saying with you, not saying with the applicant, with other owners.
Right.
Well, we're going to do it, and it still doesn't get done.
Well, no, and that's why I'm telling you, there's no more, I'm going to. This is being done, it's already been started.
Have they pulled any permits?
There hasn't been a permit pulled. The electrician just came there to look yesterday. He has to pull the permit before he does work, and then that, that's where we were starting, is with the electrician. So he can go in, pull the permits, get all the electrical done, so that we can make the house.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Buds a question. You, during your review here, you made a statement about either being contacted or contacting here with tonight's counsel item. When was that?
Your Honor, so there have been a number of communications, though I will say, I made contact this morning by email, so that Pastor Freeman was aware that the demolition bids were on the agenda. I will say, I don't think we had any legal obligation to do so, but I thought it was appropriate, from a due process standpoint, that they know that the demolition bids were on the agenda for this evening, so that email was sent this morning.
And then now an electrician shows up once there's the call. So it's, it's a matter of keeping the GOAT on a process, and I think counsel's been, not only at this particular case, and many of the cases that we have, we have others on our agenda tonight, whether it be demolition or code enforcement. And we put the website together with all those there, so everybody in the city can follow any case they want to see how much has gone by in time, but also what process has been. So I'm, it, I appreciate you being here and providing the information that you have, but it's, it's not, it's not closer than it was.
But it is closer.
Okay. Other comments to counsel, Vining?
Yeah, the family has been in contact with me at least three or four different occasions over this past year discussing this, and I did bring it up to Mr. Cochran, but at that time, he told me that the decision had already been made, so I didn't look into it any further. But another thing I wanted to say, I don't even think it matters in this case, but I'll say it, the, the, the structure fire was started by a tree that the city has since removed, that would fall, branches would fall in every storm, and the reason I know is because it's right in front of my daughter's house, so I really advocated for that tree to be removed before it hurt somebody, but it actually fell onto that house, hit the power line, snapped it, and caused a big spark, and that's what started that structure fire. I can't remember what year, but I clearly remember, DTE probably has more information about it. But this family, they do live out of town now, but they have a long history in the Monroe area. You probably know them by Jackson, as opposed to Freeman, but I just remember those being nice apartments. I, I do agree that it has sat vacant too long, but I would hope that they would be given, if we could, and the reason why I didn't push for it anymore is because I thought that the CBA was the last stop. I didn't realize that there was an appeals process after they made their decision, but if there's anything we can do for the family who has given to the community for decades, I would hope that we'd be able to do that.
If I had been involved a year ago, it would have been done a year ago, I assure you.
Okay. Mr. Buds?
Your Honor, I guess a question that I would have is if there are any existing contracts, either for property management or for any of the proposed work. I know that's certainly something that the Construction Board had asked for during that two-month period in September, October, November period, and nothing came forward. And I'll say, the plans have changed, and I don't, I don't, people are allowed to change what their, their plan would be, as long as they stay within the code, but, you know, it was originally decided that it was going to be sold, and there were prospective property owners that were here talking about what they might do. Something I also just want to be part of the record is that the building official and the planning department have serious concerns about whether the property can be occupied as to units, given the ceiling height in one of the lower units wouldn't be up to code without that having to be raised, that the ceilings are too low in a portion of the property. So that's a, I'll say, that would be a rehabilitation concern, but nothing has been presented forward as to what kind of the plan is, either architecturally, engineering, you know, is the structure safe? And there weren't any contracts or any plan provided, and I will say, I personally had at least two or three conversations with Pastor Freeman, that that's what was being asked for by the Construction Board, some plan moving forward, and that, that never came to fruition as a submission before today.
Okay, so, Casper Felder?
What is the current zoning? So obviously, there's no certificate, certificate of occupancy at this time, is that correct?
That is correct.
What is the current zoning of the property? And is it currently permitted as a duplex?
I believe that at one point, so I can't, I can't speak to all of those questions, I will say, not, not with definitive nature here.
And I know that Mr. Cochran is not here with us this evening.
Right. Though I will say, for a period of time, there was both worship space and apartment living, there was mixed use, I think, at one point in time, historically. And so we have to look at now, the zoning that's in place now, because there wouldn't be any grandfathered use at this point in time, because it's been vacant for many, many years. So the question would be, looking at the zoning map, and then coming up with the determination of whether any proposed use would be appropriate. I will say that one of the proposed purchasers that had contacted the city back in the past was looking at the possibility of commercial space on the lower floor and residential above. And I guess this goes to sort of my concern, that we don't have a statement of what the plan is, right? So it's hard to evaluate what kind of site plan or zoning compliance there would need to be, without, here's a submission of what, what's being proposed to be done.
I do know the history of the property, it was what he said. There was a, at one point in time, a restaurant downstairs, and then the apartment upstairs. So it's, I feel like it's always been ran the same way that I can remember my whole life, but when I was a kid, it was the church downstairs, and the family lived upstairs.
Other questions or comments from counsel?
I guess I would only say that there seems to be a disparity between the building inspector and, and the property owner, between the work that needs to be done to bring the property to, to be at a reasonable or habitable level. You know, the, the family had said, oh, we took a look at the property, we know that there's some work that needs to be done, but it's not a huge deal, we can do this, this is accomplishable.
Well, the one can draw, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
The, the building inspectors obviously came through and said, you know, this is sufficient to the point that the property needs to be demolished. So has there been any communication between the property owner and the, and the Building Department heretofore?
All of the communication that I'm aware of have been more along the lines of, if we wanted to do something, what would we need to present and do? And it was, okay, we need, you know, a site plan, we need contractor, you know, agreements as to what is being proposed, a, a plan, so to speak, as to what the intended uses are, and what work would need to be done in order to accomplish that, and there hasn't been any type of submission. And that was indicated both to prospective purchasers and to the property owner at, at hearings, and I'll say informally by email and telephone calls, as I know. Also, Mr. Sel was good enough to help me out while I was speaking. It's zoned R three, which, under the current zoning, would permit single-family dwellings, but for multifamily units, would require a special land use approval also.
So it can't be an upper and a lower, the way it's zoned right now?
Not a special land use approval.
Which that was something I was going to look up to get into. I'm, I am actually acting as the property manager, because he mentioned contracts for property manager. That's me. So at this point, I'm the one that's going to be handling and getting everything figured out. So if I could get in contact with the building to get a list of everything, so that I can make sure I give it to my contractor, that would help me get a better quote.
So Jamie, let me ask, how long ago have you been the property manager? How long now?
I, this has been in the process for the last month, of me gathering all the information I needed of the property and all that stuff to manage the property. Last week is when we went and took care of weeds, did all that stuff.
So I understand the cosmetic side, but the bigger issue is, is the inside, but that aside, so it's been a month. Has, the information that's been provided today, was that provided about the Construction Board of Appeals decision, the building official, the Circuit Court appeals not making that date? Has any of that been provided before?
No, because she told me she came to the thing in September, and that she didn't hear anything since then. She didn't know that there-
September of two, of twenty-one?
Yes. September of twenty-one, she said she came to a hearing, and she didn't know she was supposed to come back to a hearing. I know there was a death in the family, so maybe she missed the stuff. That's the only thing I can think of. But other than that, I know she was here at the one point in time, and I asked her, would you please reach out to the, the building and whoever you have to, is it the Building Commission, and get a list of everything we need to take care of? And she said she did, and didn't get nothing back, so.
Counselor, Vining?
I was, at that September meeting, if I'm not mistaken, one of the potential buyers also showed up. I forget the name.
I only remember it because I'm a Lions football fan, his name was Calvin Johnson.
Okay.
Not the one that played for the Lions.
Since then, passed.
Well, I know, the city wanted a, a bond.
Performance bond?
There was at the September meeting, some discussion about if someone was interested in moving forward, what sort of assurances would the city want in order to receive, I'll say, verification that the project would move forward. And so there was discussion about a timeline, and how long it would take, and the International Property Maintenance Code, which the city adopts as its property maintenance code, indicates that assurance can be provided in the event that there would be a change in ownership, because a change in ownership, otherwise without the new owner being obligated to take care of the issues, is prohibited by the property maintenance code. So that's why there was discussion about a bond, and moving forward with some sort of process with that prospective purchaser.
Yes, Your Honor. So I, I didn't know how much the exact dollar amount, or if there was an exact dollar amount mentioned for the bond, the potential bond, but I know that that kind of turned the, the potential buyer off. He didn't want to get that deep into, you know, putting up a bond, a security-type bond. Also, in further advocating for the family, as far as multi-use, okay, so I know we're not really talking about it a lot, but the, the opportunity, not the opportunity zones, the neighborhood enterprise zones, for instance, the neighborhood enterprise zone east talks about having commercial on the bottom and residential housing on the top. That's something that I've always said I don't see how we can achieve, because all of our buildings that had commercial on the bottom and residential on the top, the majority of them are gone. I can't even think of, I mean, maybe two or three, I'm sure Nick Osteles is going to be demolished here soon, and the Freeman property, and I can't even think of anymore.
And having a commercial down there.
Not, this is further than just this particular property, because if we're going to say, okay, we're going to give you a tax abatement, or a tax freeze, if you can make a commercial on the bottom and a housing on the top, but we don't have any buildings, that could be something we can look into, maybe modifying, because I don't know how you can achieve that in the east zone, unless I'm missing a building, somebody can correct me. Further than that, in our new neighborhood housing plan, we talked about, we, we're going to have to go to multi-use zoning to create a lot of, to make a lot of this, this plan be able to be implemented. So to say that, you know, it's zone single-family, I would like to research that, because I know we've had some, many zoning changes over the twenty years I've, you know, been here, but I'm pretty sure that at some point, that was able to be multi-use. And I understand with it being vacant this long, you'd have to start the process all over. I just really think there was some, maybe miscommunication, maybe on the owner's part. And again, I'm just advocating for, you know, and even if, if we were to give them a chance, like we have with other building owners, especially in the downtown area, and they still proceed without doing anything after this, but personally, I would like to see what they can do with the property.
Thank you. Is there any other final comments from the council members? Okay, before the council this evening is the approval of demolition contract for two locations, and so I'm looking, Mr. Buds, because we have one that has an applicant that's here, or not applicant, but representing the owner, and the other does not. So I'm looking for, because I'm not sure where this will proceed. Is it something that can be made that they're separate?
I would recommend two separate motions at this point. To give background on the other, it's ten twenty-six East Second Street, that was the subject of the Construction Board of Appeals hearing as well. Representative of the property owner did appear at that Construction Board hearing and indicated that the condition was much worse than what they anticipated or understood to be the condition- they anticipated or understood to be the conditions on the interior. Not to belabor the discussion, but for those that will recall that were on council, that was a property that was boarded up as a drug nuisance property as well in the past. And the property representatives indicated that it was worse than anticipated and that they agreed and consented to the demolition occurring. So that is, I'll say, at least in my opinion, non-controversial at this point. No appeal has been filed with the circuit court. So I would ask that that may be your first action item is to approve that. And then if you want to have any other further discussion regarding the 1304 East First property, then that would be appropriate as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buds. So we'll start there and then we'll get to the conversation we've had here for a while. But the, so with that, we'll be looking to split the item and please include the, I guess, the address is 1026 East Second Street, correct? So in the motion, if we're going to split these and have that along with the contract amount and the who is receiving the contract. Councilwoman Lamore?
Yes, I'll make that motion, your honor. Motion to approve an agreement with Salon Bean Trucking and Escavating, the amount of $18,061.67 for the demolition of 1026 East Second Street, that the building and zoning official be authorized to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the city, and that the assistant city manager slash finance director be authorized to make any necessary funding transfers and budget amendments.
Some motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine regarding the, this item is 3709, however, specific to the address of 1026 East Second Street. Any final comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining? Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. So we still have the second half of the item on, the discussion's going on regarding 3709. So at this time, it requires council action at some sense. So be looking for a motion of, I know that a recommendation here from the staff is that, recommend that the council approve the agreement, David C. Hoffman, the amount of $27,950 for demolition of 1304 East First Street, but I'll entertain any motion. Councilwoman Felder?
Your honor, I, I for one would be okay with tabling the item for a month to provide the homeowners with time to respond to the, in align themselves with the process and avail themselves of any appeals that might still be pending, or to begin work that's going to bring everything up to code. And then, of course, we have the outstanding zoning issues. I expect that that is a fairly significant lift, however, and I'm not sure the probability of that all getting done before the next meeting, but I'm happy to give them a chance.
So what is your motion? You want to postpone action on item, on this item related to 1304 East First Street?
Would I need the date of the meeting that it would be postponed to?
That would be helpful.
That would-
Yeah, I think it would be the 17th.
Just one minute.
17th, I believe. Well, you said a month, or is it the, maybe I want to say a regular scheduled meeting on such and such a date because a month doesn't-
I think two weeks is ambitious. I think a month is ambitious.
You're given a date that's about a month. So I think specific to a date at least is better than a month because then it's not a council meeting night, so potentially.
I can make a motion if you'd like. I'd make a motion to table the agreement with David C. Hoffman and Sons, the amount of $27,950 for the demolition of 1304 East First Street until the next meeting of October 17th.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, that the, on item 3709, specific to the property at 1304 East First Street, be postponed until the October 17th regular city council meeting. Is that correct?
That's what I have.
Buds?
Your honor, the only thing I want to say so that I'm clear, at least from a legal perspective at this point, and council can obviously give other direction, the action item tonight was to approve the demolition contract. That is an expenditure of money for the demolition, which I will understand if council tables, certainly within their prerogative. It doesn't necessarily change the decision of what the construction board of appeals was, which to uphold the demolition order, which there would need to be, I'll say, either further action on, and I don't want to get detailed into that tonight, but I want to make sure we're talking about tabling the demolition contract as the item that was before council. That doesn't necessarily negate anything about the prior decision of the construction board or the building official, just for clarity.
Correct? Councilwoman Lamore?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Stillgrave? I think what, well, he'll repeat it.
I'm sorry. So what I wanted to make clear was that the action that was being decided on tonight for the potential tabling by the motion that's on the floor right now would not in any way change what the construction board's decision is because that's not what's before the council. This is about expending money and approving the contract on the demolition, excuse me, bid. There would need to be other dialogue or discussion about what would happen as far as the actual demolition order. And I will say, I know that it would be the building official's position that he can't issue any permits while that demolition order is pending because it's been the city's position that there's demolition. So I think it's got to be, I want that to be clear, that nothing in what's decided tonight changes that demolition order that exists from the construction board at this point.
Councilwoman?
So removing that address from this decision tonight, and then that would make it impossible for the family to pull permits?
So procedurally, nothing will happen as far as the demolition if this motion passes, right? So I want to be clear on that. That, the demolition won't move forward at this point. What doesn't get changed necessarily is the construction board's decision that, hey, the property in its current state needs to be demolished. That doesn't mean there can't be dialogue, but to me, we're in a sort of awkward limbo of that decision's gone final by not having been appealed. So we're in a situation where, as a legal matter, I'm forced to say, the construction board of appeals decided there was no appeal. That should be the final decision on whether it needs to be demolished or not. That leaves open the question of, is the city going to expend the money on the demolition? I don't have any prob, I'm just saying, it puts us in an awkward position. It's fine. We will work our way through it, but I want to be clear what the action is tonight.
Follow-up question?
Councilwoman?
Is there an outstanding appeals process that the property owner could at this time avail themselves of, or is that door closed?
I want to be careful to get into what I'll call legal positioning, or what might be attorney-client communication between the city in a public meeting. So I want to be careful about how we describe that, and we may have further dialogue in a closed session in the future. Might be my recommendation as far as that goes. As it stands, a, an appeal of the construction board of appeals decision should have been filed within 21 days of that decision. I'm not going to say that forecloses other legal avenues for the property owner, and I'll just leave it at that.
And the applicant, precluded the applicant to take up those initiatives, not necessarily the city.
Okay.
Any other comments or dialogue? So, clear on the motion? I guess I would say in a short sense that the motion is to bring this back at the October 17th meeting, so. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
No.
Thank you. Clerk, next item, please. Yes, you could provide that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the last one from the consent agenda that was moved over. It's item 3705, Authorization for Code Enforcement Legal Action.
Mr. Buds?
Your honor, there were, hold on, let me flip notes here for just a second. There were four properties that were listed for the potential code enforcement by myself and Gene O'Brien in our continued efforts on code enforcement in the city. I'm happy to report that on one, 167 Richards, we've had continuing, ongoing dialogue. For those that may recall, we did actually sue the prior property owner on this property back last year. It's largely overgrowth of, I'll say, weeds, poison ivy-related items. And thought that we had reached an understanding, the property back last year was still owned by a deceased estate. It had then transferred out to one of the daughters. Long and short of it is that we, she came into my office today and signed an agreement that the city will get a contract with a landscape contractor that we already have a bid for, to go in and do the necessary cleanup. She was going to try to attempt to do that on her own and realized it was a larger project than maybe she had planned on. And so we obtained an estimate for $1,000. The property owner is going to pay that invoice. The city's going to arrange for that cleanup and we'll consider that hopefully amicably resolved once that's complete. We will also make outreach to the neighbors that we're having. I'll say nuisance animal issues in advance of that cleanup occurring because there could be some unexpected visitors as a result of the cleanup. The other is 465 Riverview. I will say, we had some communication from citizens indicating that there was going to be effort to make a necessary cleanup there and that there were some, I'll say, inabilities on the property owners to be able to clean up that property. Lauren Benes did go out for an inspection today. I'll say, I don't believe everything is resolved, but there was substantial effort made, is how I think I would report the building officials comment on that. And so I would recommend that we not proceed forward on that one at this time, but look for a future continued activity, and we'd bring that back before council if necessary. And with that, I would ask that we proceed. There's been no communication with the property owners at 523 West Fifth or 412 East Chester. So we would ask that the legal action be authorized on those two properties.
So, Mr. Buds, you're moving forward with the authorization to, for code enforcement legal action for the, only for the two addresses, what you're looking for in the motion, 523 West Fifth and 412 East Chester, correct?
That's correct, your honor.
Any questions from the council? Councilwoman Lamore?
I make a motion to approve the city attorney's office to proceed filing complaints and pursuing circuit court judgments to enforce abatement and/or code enforcement at 523 West Fifth Street and 412 East Chester.
Okay, thanks. This is a motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on item 3705, the Authorization for Code Enforcement Legal Action for the two residents stated. There's two locations stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Yes.
Felder? Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Further items this evening.
It's council comments. It's, Councilwoman Vining first. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you, your honor. If you notice at the battlefield, there are 550 flags in honor of the POWs and missing in action servicemen. It's quite the sight to see. So if you have a chance, drive by there. It'll make you cry. In addition to that, the military families of Monroe County, you can go on their Facebook page. They are looking for letters to the servicemen and women that are all over the world. And if you could go on their Facebook page and supply some letters to some of these servicemen and women, they would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lamore?
Your honor, great discussion at our work session tonight about the grade separation. I think it shows a lot of promise for infrastructure within our city, and it really could lead to a lot of new things, beginning a new chapter of life, so to speak, in our city. So I look forward to us formally applying for that application by the 4th of October and getting that done and seeing where it's going to take us. So I think it's a great, a great thing to get into, and hopefully we can get that done. And I think the residents will see a lot of, lot of growth in the city of Monroe just because of that alone. And that's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Felder?
Yes, certainly thank you to the representatives from the library and from the Opportunity Center who came this evening, and certainly thank you to all the legislative leaders at the state who helped move that project and that funding forward. I spent the past weekend with Captain Ogins, who is a member of Leadership Monroe. Now we are, we are members of the best class ever. And he just gave a really good account of himself, and I wanted to mention him. The city has some really fine people working for it. While we were going, there were certainly a lot of events still here in Monroe. I know that the Salvation Army and the River Raisin Institute both had events. The Beer Fest, I think, was just about sold out on Saturday. So that was fantastic. And I know the Pop Fest was going on, too. I saw the mayor at the Spirit of Service Awards that the museum hosted, and that was open to the public. And then certainly, as Michelle mentioned, a thank you to the Kiwanis and Action Club and others who helped put out those flags at the battlefield. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stillgrave?
Well, your honor, I'm just going to echo all the comments. I thought the Beer Fest was wonderful. Kiwanis has been doing great on their part with the battlefield, helping put up flags and take them down. And outside of that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments from you this evening. First, I want to congratulate the Second Missionary Baptist Church for their 100th year centennial celebration. You talk about history and legacy within our, in our community, and to see the continued growth and the number of pastors and, you know, opportunity at one of their activities. I know Councilwoman Vining was there as well. And just to see them with their photographs of original leadership teams, pastors and community, and two great articles in the Monroe News here the past couple of days. So my congratulations to them, just another of our legacy churches and here in our, in our community. That's important. So congrats to them. And I, well, I look forward to the next 100 years. I won't be here, but I know many in our community will be, and I hope that they continue to have success as they've had. There has been many activities, and I know just the past weekend, I want to thank the Rotary Club for their continued involvement with the playscape at Muntz. And they went out and did a lot of refurbishing and painting and new post holes, working with the city as well to make it work for all the community. But service clubs, we have many great service clubs in our community, and that's just one of them that went out and did the work and helped to make it better. So while out there and watching, and somehow got me to dig a post hole, but it was kind of fun to do. I did not do it myself. I just, it was fun to help to see all the community come together. But also out at the airport was the Michigan Jets Turbine Air Show. And it was just fabulous to see and some of the, the group that was probably do, not just do it as a hobby, but it's also important to them. And of course, many were former military and service people, saw by the uniforms, hats, and our conversations. So it was great to see that a use out at the Muntz Airport for that. So I think I'll stop there for my comments. So Clerk Treasurer Lavoie?
I wanted to thank Caitlin for being here the last meeting when I was unable to be due to COVID. So, and hopefully my voice will get stronger because I know you all love listening to me. So tonight, I'm just going to make a real quick comment that absentee ballots should be going out at the end of next week. So I urge you, if you would like one in that initial mailing, to get your absentee application into us. If you don't want to, that's fine. We'll be at the precincts on election day. But if you know someone who lives overseas and they're going to be in need of a ballot, this is the week for them to apply. They can email my office and I can give them the instructions because there are some simple ways to get that done that still preserve the integrity of the election. So just, it's absentee time, and I just wanted to make sure people don't forget that.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Sell?
Thank you, mayor. Nothing new for me, but if you would allow Patrick Lewis to give a short presentation on leafbag distribution this year, that would be great.
They'll be calling.
Again, honorable mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. We can tell us about time when the Halloween decorations start coming up. So we have secured our annual supply of 72,000 leafbags, and we'll pass those out, limit of 50 per household. We're going to start distribution on the first two Saturdays in October from 8:00 to noon. And then we're going to do every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, starting October 4th, from 2:30 to 5:30, at our Department of Public Services Yard, 222 Jones Avenue. We're going to do them just like we've done the last three or four years, and they'll be cones set up. We'll snake you around through there. You don't even have to get out of your car. So just pull in through the forestry bay and we'll load them in your car for you. And that's, I think, about it. So while supplies last, last year, they lasted till about the end of October, but get them while you can. So once we're out, we're out.
Yes, the dates again, Patrick?
Absolutely. Our first date of distribution will be Saturday, October 1st, from 8:00 AM to noon. And then we're going to go the following Saturday as well. and then we're going to go the following Saturday as well, from 8:00 to noon. That'll be October 8th. And our regular distribution will be starting the first Tuesday. So, it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and those will, all the Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays will be 2:30 to 5:30. So, 4th, 5th, 6th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 18th, 19th, 20th, and 25th, 26th, 27th. So, again, while supplies last, and they typically last till about the end of the month, we'll probably keep going if we still had them, but I think it's a safe bet, we'll probably be out by around the end of October.
Councilwoman, if I'm not mistaken, there's a flyer out by the engineering and DPS desk.
We put them on all the counters on the first floor, and it's on the, it's on the city's webpage, too, so don't, don't hesitate to call. Folks have been calling for the last month, wanting to know when we're going to distribute them, so I'm happy to say, starting a week from Saturday, down at DPS, 8:00 to noon. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Sell, anything further?
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' comments, public comment. So, just to be a reminder, as we do at all, all meetings, for public comment, please come forward, state your name, and also your jurisdiction or residency. I do need to make a couple of comments from the last meeting, and that's where I sometimes miss when I have Clerk Lavoy and I go through these. So, as you heard earlier this evening, there was communications on the agenda. Communications are items that come into either by email, by mail, and they usually come to the clerks, or they come to the mayor, and sometimes they're addressed for the council, which they can get a copy and, or just administration. Those communications aren't read in the record, because as Clerk Treasurer Lavoy has stated, policies, those records that are put on the agenda as a communication can be found on the city's agenda record for the day, and I'll let Clerk maybe mention that further, so, if you would.
So, you can go to monroam.gov, and there is a, you can click on Agenda, and the, under public comment on the agenda, for instance, for this evening, is a copy of the agenda item, as well as the letter that was submitted for the record. And we already have some for next meeting, the first meet, which is the first meeting in October, but those won't be available until that agenda is published. But the, the point is, is when they're received in my office or received by the mayor, to be asked to be read into the record, he forwards them to me, and they do become part of the permanent public record. So, 100 years from now, they will still be with the records from this evening's agenda.
Thank you. So, as I receive those emails, I communicate back to the person that sends them. This has been read in the record. I advise them how, if they wish to have it read in the record, they personally have to be here to do that. You can't read it for somebody else, and, and that, but I do say it is part of the record by sending to the clerk's office. So, I want to clarify that, because last week, I, or, I'm sorry, last meeting, I did not follow that in a circumstance, and if you have something that you have prepared for yourself and read, that's fine. Mindful of the rules of the chamber is three minutes. And again, we need your name and jurisdiction or residency. However, reading letters sent by other people to come forward and read them for them is not part of the current policy. So, with that, any comments this evening? Yes, sir. Your name and jurisdiction or residence or address, please.
Your Honor and respected city council members, my name is Richard McIvy. I'm a resident of the city of Monroe. It has come to my attention from the likes of a renowned historian that allegations raised against George Armstrong Custer at the last city council meeting on September 6th of this year, excuse me, were seriously flawed and need to be corrected as follows. Custer detractors say he slaughtered native women and children, and all too often, the Sand Creek massacre is incorrectly cited as one of his crimes. Custer was nowhere near Sand Creek in 1864. At that time, Custer was busy fighting on behalf of the Union Army in an effort to end slavery. The Battle of the Wasatchaw is not the Sand Creek massacre. Though detractors call Custer a murderer or a war criminal, they ignore all the times he chose to negotiate rather than fight. Custer followed the Cheyenne to the Sweetwater in Texas in March of 1869. The 7th Cavalry and the 19th Kansas greatly outnumbered the Cheyenne. Though urged to attack, Custer instead sought negotiations with Chief Stoneforehead, and without firing one shot, he secured the release of two white women who were being held hostage in the village. In March of 1875, the Rikara, Mandan, and Hidatsa tribes requested Custer to broker a peace deal with their enemies, the Lakota, who had been hiding, who had been raiding their reservations. Custer did so. In that same month, when the government supplies failed to arrive at Standing Rock Agency, Custer tried to feed 5,000 Lakota. So, how could you call him a war criminal if he did any of these kinds of things? If those who disparaged Custer's career tried to learn a little bit more about him, they too would know. Custer was in Washington, DC in the spring of 1876, testifying to Congress against the corruption that was depriving both army forts and Native American agencies of their promised rations, and Custer nearly lost his job because of it. George Custer continues to be a scapegoat for an unjust Indian policy that he had absolutely no control over. Custer was a Civil War hero whose efforts helped free millions from bondage, and he served with distinction in the American West. Please do not allow a false history to destroy the legacy of the veteran who was proud to call Monroe his home. The information presented here from a document, is from a document filed with the city clerk. All particulars are noted there for the record, including the name of the author, and as you indicated, these letters are no longer read into the record at a city council meeting, so we have no option but to do what we can to get the information out there in any way that's we can possible. And may I ask?
Three minutes.
Is there, are these documents, Your Honor?
Three minutes, Mr. McIvy.
Are they listed in the computer somewhere, where people read those?
Clerk Treasurer, I think she just addressed that, but go ahead.
Yes, they are part of the agenda for tonight, and they're on the, at monroam.gov under the agenda, so you just have to click there. But of course, as, as I always state, anyone is welcome to contact myself or the clerk's office in general, request a copy of it, and we would be able to provide that for them as well.
Terriful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments here this evening, and before the next person comes up, just for clarification, items that were received here just recently in the last day or two in the week that the agenda was completed, and those letters will appear at the, as a communication and included in the clerk's record at the next regular city council meeting. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Name and jurisdiction or residency. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nat Spur, Pine Creek Indian Reservation, Natawasepe Huron Band of the Potawatomi. On the onset, I just want to say to everybody, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and, you know, if I thought this was a hopeful, you know, a hopeless lost cause, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be here if there weren't a lot of things that I do like about the city of Monroe and Monroe County. You know, I was just telling my wife the other day, I've seen more bald eagles in Monroe County than I've ever seen anywhere else in the United States except for Alaska, or anywhere in North America, actually. I have plenty of friends here. A lot of them have spoken at these same meetings and addressed this delegation, just as I have. You know, I really think there is hope that we can resolve this situation with the Custer statue at some point. I want to say, like, one thing, I think there's a misconception that's out there is that this is a political issue. I mean, I realize all of you serve as nonpartisan elected leaders, but this has been seen as like a Republican-Democrat thing, I think, especially after the MDP resolution was announced. And it's not that at all. This is a human rights issue. This is the most one-sided human rights issue when it comes to Native Americans that I've seen since Standing Rock. I was at Standing Rock six years ago, and, you know, I think, like, as far as, like, you know, I mentioned last, last year, or last time I was here, on the day after Labor Day, the federal court case that I had, when I had a racist white woman who had a history of stalking me and harassment, a federal court case that worked its way all up the federal court system, and every single judge but one of them that weighed in on that and had my back and had my tribe's back in that, in that case, was appointed by a Republican president. All but one of them were Republican judges. And, and another thing that I, I saw a video that's making its way across the internet, and I addressed this group probably 15 or 16 months ago. I mentioned the name of Tim Walberg, the congressman for this district, who with the new districts, I'm sure he'll be my congressman as well when the new term starts. He changed his position on this issue, and, and he's, he's now calling for a full history. He wants a full history, and he's not happy with the way that the statue is at this time. I, I was, you know, when I mentioned his name before, I had mentioned that I thought it was ironic that he was staying silent about this issue, and then I couldn't figure it out, and then I figured out why, and the reason was several tribes in Michigan, including my own, give him the maximum contribution allowable. So, I hope it's not just because of money. I'm hoping he's doing the right thing. But all of us are completely united about this. Every single member of a federally recognized tribe in the United States, and there are 574 of them, 12 of them are in Michigan, has spoken out. We're united on this issue, and we're universal when it comes to this. Every single tribe and every single person who's a member of a federally recognized tribe has spoken out, and one group that has not spoken out, that I'll address the next time I'm here, is the Yandata Vanderdon.
Yeah, three minutes and 13. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, Mayor?
Hi, I'm Shawna Farley, Frenchtown Township. I guess you'd call it the wet side of Woodland Beach. That's me. So, what I wanted to ask, and probably come back here and keep asking, is if there's been any movement considering the statue and human rights issue and representation of only Custer in Monroe. And the reason being is, if we look at historians outside of Monroe, there has been a consensus to talk about Holocaust and things that Hitler got from us to learn how to properly, you know, do things because of what he, you know, what they saw from our Native Americans. So, I thought maybe a picture could help. I can't imagine, if I were a Holocaust survivor, I'd want to visit a Hitler statue. Send my children to Hitler School, one or two, drive on or walk on North Hitler Street, or maybe be at a park and see, you know, Hitler Airport. Nor would I want to play at a park or anywhere where this was a representation of somebody who attacked my people. And that's why I'm asking, when you have this conversation, what we're, what is lacking in Monroe is the, the recognized native voice, and if we don't go by recognized native voice, we can get lost because we can't come from that kind of understanding. Just like I can grow up in Monroe and not think one thing about Custer, yet all across America, our Native Americans are speaking and saying, can't we just move it to a museum? Can't we move it here? And if we made a decision, the council and Monroe, if we found a way to come together on this issue, we could talk about, you know, there are places that we could ask for funding that doesn't deal with just our pockets that everybody goes around saying. I shouldn't say everybody. Many people go around, oh, we're not paying for that. Again, what does it feel like to walk into Monroe? Are we inclusive? Do we care? Do we acknowledge the pain? Do we know all of history, or are we only Custer? Because I believe we should be broad. I believe we should be inclusive in all history, because all of it is relevant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes? Yes, thank you.
Can I just say it's freezing? It's freezing. I'm freezing. Hi, everybody. Call city Monroe. So, I just want to say, I think Monroe as a city fell hard for Libby's campaign for Custer to reinvent his image, and I think maybe in the past, Monroe didn't have a whole ton going for it, so perhaps it was a local hometown hero that everyone could latch on to. But I think that in 2022, Monroe really has a lot going for it. We are renovating. We are building. We are getting new business. We are in a prime position. I always say this, between Detroit and Toledo, we have a beautiful river. We have a state park. We need to relegate this divisive figure to our past. I think it would be really, really cool if we could have a new and interactive centerpiece for our city. When, you know, the, the parks are having their whole, we have a whole new park plan that is centered, you know, around this part of town, and it still sits there, Custer Monument. And I think, I mean, I would much rather see something that people get excited to go take pictures in front of, something that could accommodate large crowds or families, instead of seeing people who are pained and angry, standing under the statue every couple months, angry protesting about these things under his feet. I think politics might be about getting your vote from your constituents, but Laura Bush said, "Leadership is not about popularity, it's about doing what's right." On a different note, this month is Hispanic Heritage Month. It was great to see the mayor at Pointe in the Park, and I hope that other members of council have taken a moment out of their month to learn about our local Hispanic community, as well as Spanish-speaking communities across the US. Next month is LGBTQ+ History Month, so I would encourage you, as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, to take that time to get to know some of us. There's a couple groups in Monroe that you could reach out to, educate yourself. And November is, of course, Native American Heritage Month, and you know what I'm going to say about that. So, I think there's a lot of honorary months, but I think they're good reminders for those of us who are not from those communities to take a moment to put ourselves in someone else's shoes and educate ourselves, because I think empathy begins with those conversations, and it begins with sharing a meal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn. It's a motion by Councilwoman Lomor, supported by Councilwoman Germani, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vining? Germani?
Yes.
Lomor?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Thank you all for being here.